Good morning, everybody. This is a great opportunity for us to get together and chat about a very important topic in our community. This has not been done before. This is an informal meeting, but it's an open meeting. And because of that, we are streaming this on our Facebook and YouTube channels, as well as we've invited our media in to listen in. So as we talk today, make sure we go on microphone so that people can hear. Even though we might be able to hear you in the room, people online cannot hear you if you don't have a microphone near you when you speak. There may be a few more people show up. I know we had as many as 10 legislators potentially said that they would be here. So some of them may still be coming in. We don't know. Thank you for the electeds for sitting at the table, but we do have some very important staff that sits around behind us. And also Nate, thank you for being here today from the Hot Team. Again, my name is Jim Howell, one of the county commissioners here. This conversation for today's meeting actually started last Saturday. I was talking with Commissioner Helgerson, and we were talking about this topic. And he said, you know, we really ought to get together at some point to kind of talk between city, county, and state and kind of find out where we're at, what's going on, and who has the ball in the court type of thing. And what's going on in this arena? It's a very, very important topic for our community. I know that councilperson Ballard and Commissioner Beatty have been attending the homeless task force meetings each and every month. There's been a lot of discussion over there. We know that there are some of the shelters in the community that have a voice in that room as well. We know we have some unique challenges this year, and so we just thought it would be kind of important for us to get together and kind of find out where we're at. This is, we don't really have an agenda today other than just simply, you see the agenda in front of you. It's not a hard agenda. We can deviate however the will of the body is. And so I just want to say, welcome to Sedgwick County. Thanks for being in our meeting and taking time to be with us this morning. I'd like to go around the room. As my count, I think we have, I think, five state legislators here today so far, three council members, three county commissioners, and of course, lots of other support people behind us and around the room that are very important. So with that, I'd like to do introductions. I'd like to start with Councilman Hoheisel over here. Would you introduce yourself and anything else you want to say as we get started? And we will kind of move down our agenda after that. Thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel, District 3. This is a cause very near and dear to my heart. So I appreciate everybody showing up, and let's get something done.
David Dennis, County Commissioner for District 3.
Representative Henry Helgerson.
Nick Hoheisel, State Representative, South West Wichita, 97th District.
Jeff Blueball, Wichita City Council, District 4.
I've already introduced myself, but I'm Jim Howell, County Commissioner.
I'm Ryan Beatty, County Commissioner, District 4.
Sarah Lopez, County Commissioner, District 2.
Maggie Ballard, Wichita City Council, District 6.
Nate, we all wish our police departments homeless outreach team.
Sandy Pickert, State Representative, District 88 in southeast Wichita.
Abel Burquist, District 91, State Representative, North Wichita and part of Sedgwick County.
Good morning. I'm Cindy Howerton, State Representative for District 98, which is South Wichita, North Hayesville, and a little bit of Derby.
Good morning. Leah Howell, State Representative, District 82, which is South Derby and Mulvane area.
Well, thank you for everybody for introducing yourselves. I didn't see Commissioner Lopez in here. So we actually have four commissioners. That's awesome to have four of them here. Commissioner Chairman Pete Meister would be here, but he has a conflict in his calendar right now, so that's okay. He's doing important work as well. So with that, thank you for the introductions. Please help yourself to more treats on the side here as you need. Restrooms are down the hall. This is an informal meeting. Please don't worry about getting up, or if you have a question or comment, just certainly get the attention, and we will hear everybody speak. And with that, I would like to recognize Commissioner Beatty and Councilwoman Ballard. I'd like to have them lead us kind of through this PowerPoint, kind of explain to us what's going on so far. And so with that, Commissioner Beatty.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Commissioner Howell. And again, I'd like to echo, thank you for being here today. I think it's incredibly important that our community sees all levels of government, state, county, city, nonprofit, law enforcement. It's very important that they see us working together on these topics that are of consequential importance to our community. I want to pause real quick and want to recognize a couple of other people that are here because as Commissioner Howell said, we're going to facilitate some conversation today. And that's what's really needed at this point is just open dialogue about these things and bouncing ideas and trying to understand the gravity of the situation and where we're heading. And I think it's also important to understand the trend lines. We'll talk a little bit, the point of this meeting is about emergency shelter beds, and there has been a lot of conversation in the last couple of weeks, and there has been some changes based on what we see on this graph here. But I also want to walk us through a little bit more context about what this situation really looks like. I think it's one thing to narrow in on the scope of the emergency shelter beds, but we won't fully understand that capacity unless we fully understand or better understand the situation of those that are unhoused in our community, the factors that contribute to it, where we're heading as a community, what plans are already in place, and who needs to be at the table for those conversations. So I hope to walk us through that, but I'd like to recognize a couple of people real quick. Alex Oakley is also here from Congressman Estes's office. We mentioned Officer Nate Sweetall from Hot Team. Thank you, Nate. It's been valuable information today. Jason Gregory is back here from GWP. Been in on the conversations from the business community. He's also from the downtown Wichita Board. And then Matt Lowe and Abel Frederick from United Way Continuum of Care is those that know, and they're going to be, I kind of let them in. I said, hey, I'm going to lean into you a little bit today on some of this information. But as many of you know, the United Way for our region is the lead agency for the continuum of care program. So not only do they collaborate the grand dollars, but they also collaborate many of the efforts and the conversations in this space. So with that being said, I want to move us forward to kind of helping to define the crisis and the landscape. And I think it would be, I think it'd be inappropriate to believe that this is just a situation that is impacting downtown Wichita. As many of you have realized, the situation of those that are unhoused, the encampments, those that are having housing instability is impacting an entire community. I would say it's impacting an entire nation for a variety of reasons, but we see this situation, barriers that's faced mostly in downtown Wichita and the midtown area. But we have seen encampments in Goddard. We see encampments in Mays. We see encampments right under the bridge here at Broadway. We see them in Delano. We see these all over the community. I've talked to people in Mays and Valley Center and Park City. I don't want us to lead into this conversation believing that the situation with homelessness is just those that are experiencing mental health and substance use in downtown Wichita. It's a much broader conversation than that, and I think it's an important context to understand that as we walk into this. So if you wouldn't mind, Matt, there's Matt, right on time. The United Way, as I said, with the continuum of care is kind of leading this effort in many ways. We're going to try to define the crisis a little bit and define the situation of what homelessness and the unhoused and being unsheltered looks like in Sedgwick County. Would you be able to speak to maybe the point in time count, what that's like, and then just your analysis of what we're dealing with?
Okay. Y'all hear me?
We're stuck.
I'm right in the corner. So yeah, I mean, we've continued to see increasing numbers of homeless individuals every year through the point in time count, which is a count that we do in January every year. This last year, we had 702 people that were unhoused at that time, 155 of which were unsheltered. And conversations real recently, as recent as this week with Open Door, you know, they're saying they're having fewer numbers of people there, but the reason being is because they're spreading out throughout the county. So we're seeing more homeless encampments on the west side. The south side is probably the largest encampments. And so we're starting to see it spread out more and more. So then you couple in, you know, with shelters closing and that kind of thing, and we're pushing up against wintertime, and it becomes a very concerning situation for those experiencing homelessness this year. And we had almost 30 people died last year, you know, on the streets. We have a memorial every year for them, and we don't want to see that. That's a shame. No one should ever have to die on the street, and so we want to see that not happen anymore.
Appreciate that, Matt. Officer Nate, would you be able to give a little bit of just an insight of what you're experiencing on a day-to-day basis primarily with the Hot Team and what it is you guys do and what this looks like and where you see this, where this trend line's heading?
Right. So first of all, our team, we were four officers who get dispatched throughout the city to try to, that have 911 calls related to homeless encampments, and we are in charge of enforcing that because there are some legalities that you have to make sure you follow, right? With federal law, before you can enforce a camping ordinance or do campsite cleanups. And so our team specializes in that. But we're also, every time we make contact with someone, we make sure that we offer resources. Our goal is, our performance measure set by our city manager is how many homeless individuals can we get off the streets and into permanent housing? It's not tickets or arrests for our team. So that's good. What we're seeing, though, is the last year, and Matt, you can probably back me up on the statistics, two years ago, our unsheltered population was 9.9%, which is actually pretty good. Nationally, that runs around 35%. This last point in time count, it was 21%. We might expect that to even go up more. The reasons why, I don't know. We can bounce in and talk about that. Who knows? But we've basically seen a doubling effect in our homeless population camping outside. And actually, I believe the number that of homeless that died, I believe, was 48. The years before typically you run 10 to 15. So you're looking at, you know, almost a 500% increase could be in homeless deaths from the year before. So that's a concern for us, and that's basically what we're seeing, a lot more people camping out and not utilizing the shelters for various reasons. And also, the number of shelter beds are down. We also, you can look at these numbers, but some of these, they're either high barrier or they're for specific populations. Like, you know, the beds at the Emporium House, it's going to be for veterans. So you might have some, they might have an open bed, but we can't utilize that because that's, you know, for a veteran, and we can go on and on about that.
That's good. Any questions for Matt or Officer Nate? You said 9% and then 21%. What's that a percent of?
That's the unsheltered, the ones not using shelters that are camping outside. So we do this homeless point in time count. A lot of outreach workers go out and they do surveys. And if they're not in a shelter and they're in a tent or camping outside, that's where that number comes from.
So it's 21% of unhoused that are, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, 21% of that 702. So that goes 155, the 155 number he's talking about, that was doubled from two years ago.
And you said the national average is 35?
35%.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Couple of other questions. I was just curious, what percentage, if you can answer this, what percentage of these folks have substance abuse, dependency issues that may be a factor in their status?
We don't have the exact number because it's kind of a, you know, you're relying a lot on people to report that. But in our database system, I mean, over half of them will report some type of mental health or substance use issue, if not both.
I've seen an old study, national study, that 80% of your homeless population either has mental health issues or substance abuse or both. That was a little bit older study. I'd like to get some updated information on that, but that's where it was a while ago.
Representative Howerton.
Thank you. Do you have a percentage of like children versus adults or any ideas on those numbers?
You know, again, sometimes it's hard to measure that because the McKinney-Vento, you know, the way that they, the school district describes homelessness, they would count anybody that's doubled up or like living in hotels and that kind of thing. And so they're seeing about 1,700 kids a year. I don't have the exact number, but of those shelters up there, you know, the St. Anthony Family Shelter will take children, and then the youth crossroad shelter, or specifically for youth.
The numbers, it's called doubling up homelessness. So it's a different type of homeless.
And those people are imminent risk of becoming homeless at any time because, I mean, as you can imagine, if you have another family living with you, how long does that last before you start thinking, when are these people going to leave? And so, you know, they end up a lot of times in homelessness situations.
Nate, we've had quite a few conversations here last week or so, and we continue to see, they go from South Broadway, then they, you know, you probably see it too, they walk down the big ditch, they come out to West Kellogg, or they're in Old Town, and they go to Delano. Is this a reflection of, are people resistant to the resources now? Or why is it so scattered? Because I don't think we've ever seen it this scattered before, have we?
That's a good question to ask. It's a variety of reasons. I mean, some people like to stay in the area where they're at. Some people, they don't, they might be scared of the downtown area and some of the issues that occur with that amount of people, and they kind of want to be left alone. The West Kellogg, which is your district, that area has very affordable hotels and motels. So if they're able to panhandle and get some money, they can stay in those that are affordable. So that's what attracts them there. So it's a little bit of, a lot of different things. I can tell you the homeless face, as far as those that have substance abuse issues, has changed. When we first started our homeless outreach team, most of the people that we dealt with had alcohols and problems, and there was substance abuse. We almost never see that anymore. And you can talk to the detox center, and the majority of the people they see are methamphetamine or fentanyl is the people that are going into their facilities, not alcohol as much. So we're seeing that too on the streets. That is an upper. It keeps people up, they don't sleep for days on end, so there's no reason for them to use the shelter.
One quick question on the count. When was that conducted?
In January.
So it's in cold weather, basically. It was a cold weather day.
And the idea behind that is that, you know, most people, people are most likely to use shelter when it's freezing cold outside, so the number actually swells, you know, during the warm months. So if it was 702 in January, it's probably 1,000 in the summertime.
Okay, gotcha.
It's easier to count them in the beds, so you get more accurate count that way.
I would also say that the point in time count, although I think it is probably the best point in time count we've had ever here, I don't think that anyone's under the assumption that 702 people is the total number of people that are homeless in our community. The number is substantially higher. USD 259 has a statistic that they've shared with the task force that they believe that 1,400 of their children in their school district are unhoused. Some live in shelters, some live in cars, some live doubled up on couches, some are living in other places, but it's a significant issue. Family Promise will tell you that they believe there's over 2,000 children in our community that are what deemed unhoused or unsheltered. So it's a significant issue. I want to walk back to the causes of some of these things. I think it's really important to understand what's influencing these, the root causes that are influencing these outcomes. Officer Nate mentioned something because the influences have changed. The type of drug use has changed. And you jump in anytime you want on this one here, but the sheriff had, came to my cab meeting two weeks ago, and he'd mentioned that, you know, a decade ago, the drug of choice that was plaguing our community, and many times was just the old-fashioned methamphetamine. There's a different type of methamphetamine that is plaguing our streets today, and he calls it a cartel meth. It's a meth that literally will induce psychosis. So many of the people that we see that are on the streets that are experiencing mental health challenges, particularly those that are chronically homeless, some of that mental health was induced by substance use that, as Jeff Isher would say, has eaten a hole in their brain, legitimately, physically, physiologically done this. So, but there are other factors that are influencing homelessness. Obviously, as Matt and Officer Nate mentioned, substance use and mental health are a big portion of it, but there's other factors that influence homelessness. Eviction is a big part of influencing homelessness, loss of job. Domestic violence is a significant influencer of homeless situations, and the lack of affordable housing. So understanding what we're dealing with and why this is so complex, we have to understand those root causes. I think if we could pull a lever and solve this problem, I think someone would have done it a long time ago or would have done it here recently. But there's just so many complexities to this conversation, which is why we need people from all levels of government, all levels of leadership, nonprofit, faith, community, business community at the table in these. But I wanted to make sure that we understood there were different causes that are influencing these outcomes. Any other questions for matter, Nate?
Of those, I think you said 47 individuals that had died last year on the streets?
Forty-seven or 48.
Forty-seven, 48. How many of those were due to fentanyl?
It's hard to tell because you, sometimes you find someone and it's hard to, unless there's a taxonomy done on those. I can, based upon my observations on a lot of those cases, a majority definitely was because of overdosing, whether it was meth or fentanyl. And then we have had, seen an increase in fentanyl and bust throughout Kansas, especially since Wichita is a hub right in the middle from I-35 down to the border. We have seen that increase here.
Other question is specific to kind of the crisis and the landscape and root causes. And for those that are providers in our community, they would tell you that the number one cause of homelessness isn't actually mental health and substance use. It's actually a lack of affordable housing, a lack of housing options. We hear this frequently in these conversations, so.
Can I bounce a little bit off that?
Please, please do.
I know we say affordable housing, and that, yes, that's true, but also I want to know the term. And Natasha from Humankind said, I'm stealing hers, it's a lack of access to affordable housing. So we have a page of six pages of affordable housing that I could hand out to somebody, and there's openings there.
Yeah.
That a lot of our homeless have issues such as evictions, and they won't take them because they have evictions. They might have, they have disability checks. Great, you have income, but they don't make three times the amount of money for the landlord that he requires, therefore, they can't get in. And they might have, 20 years ago, they had a felony, and this complex won't take anyone that has a felony, so they can't access that affordable housing. They don't have proper ID. This one, they want a social security card. They have ID, but they don't have the social security card. So there's multiple reasons why, even if you have affordable housing, and sometimes we do, they can't have access to that affordable housing due to many of the barriers that our homeless have.
Very good. Can we stay on that for a second? I don't know. Does the state do, obviously, what the federal programs that are involved in housing and Wichita Housing Department, does the state have much play in the housing situation?
I mean, we have discussions. Affordable housing or access to affordable housing is important. I would say that the solution is probably more of a local solution than a state solution on that, though. I do have one follow-up question. I know Officer Nate, a few years ago, we had conversated about IDs and how to get IDs into these folks, and.
You helped me with that, too.
Yeah. Are we still good on that? Are we, I mean, is there anything the state can do to even ease that process even more?
No, I mean, you did great. You helped us make the rap sheets if they've been in jail as a form of ID to get their ID. We've also worked on some other programs that just started this week where we're able to find IDs from all over the United States and be able to print those off. And we're trying to make sure that those are going to be a form of ID, and I might be working with you on that. Recently, that just came up this week, and I'll get with you about that to see if we can make that as another option for the DMV.
And then on the apartment complexes that don't take individuals for whatever reason, are these property managers, these owners, are they not willing to work with us on any of these?
No, there's some that do, but there's also, you've got to understand, when you have a voucher through Section A, it comes with, they got to pass an inspection, even a rapid rehousing program, you have to do an inspection of the apartment. And sometimes landlords maybe don't want to deal with that or the inspection. So there's sometimes barriers. Now, what the city did do, we had an incentive for landlords. So if you were going to take some of our people, we're going to give you an insurance. So if anything got destroyed, they pay for that. There was also a bonus for signing people up for a first time if they had Section A. So those things that our city was doing to try to attract landlords to.
And I don't think anybody had to use the insurance. I don't, they might have made one claim, but it wasn't because of.
They made one claim over two years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's good.
Okay. Is the city working on any more incentives to try to?
We're talking about, with Sally Stang, we're talking about some different options.
Oh, microphone.
Sorry. Director Sally Stang at the homeless task force, we've been talking about some different options that we can look at from the city level that we're not already doing, maybe that some other cities are doing to use best practice.
Thank you.
You know, housing is something Councilmember Ballard and I speak a lot about, and earlier this year, Sedgwick County Appraiser Clark told me, we're 30,000 to 50,000 units short. So this is perpetually just going to get worse and worse, and you're going to bring that low end up and up and up, and there's going to be more demand for it. I know we have a meeting later today to talk about our legislative agenda, and not trying to jump the solution, but one of the things that I'd like to discuss is some of the incentives that are offered to the rural communities that maybe we need to look at Sedgwick County and give us a little bit of attention on some of those.
Yeah, and we passed some housing stuff last year that we've done. It was called the Rural Incentive Housing District, RHID, and we expanded that to allow for incentives for building in starter houses, low-income houses, basically 1,600 square-foot houses here in cities like Wichita. We expanded that out, so we're looking to get that rolling. I think we renamed it from rural to reinvest housing incentive districts. So that's another option that we have available, and our target on those aren't, you know, the big McMansions that are going on. They're 1,600-foot starter homes, affordable for folks and giving, I mean, they're still, you know, these are expensive to build, and we're trying to keep the costs low on them when they get sold or rented out. So giving developers a little more incentive to build those homes instead of the big ones that they make a good profit margin on.
Someone's dying here, though.
Not that I know of. I know you and I had some conversations on it early on, but I'm not aware of any that's going on right now.
How does that apply to duplexes?
I'd have to look and see what that covers on duplexes, but I know the square footage limit is 1,600 square foot.
My day is complete looking at two Hoheisels sitting in one side of the same table.
I prefer to be called Good Hoheisel, finally.
We're not fighting, so I think our mom will be proud.
I think this conversation about the access to affordable housing is an important one, but the supply conversation's important. Mark Clark, the County Appraiser, would, and we validated this in a conversation just last week with me, is that he believes we're short 30,000 to 50,000 units. It's significant. I'd like to ask Jason Gregory from GWP on the business side of this and the business take. I think it's important. We hear a lot from those who are providers in the space. We hear a lot from the legislators and a lot from city and county folks and the faith community, but the business community, kind of your take on where things are.
Yeah, I think when we have these conversations, I mean, you hear all of this. We see it every day in downtown, right? And you have the human element that we want to help these individuals. At the same time, you're, you know, you have somebody sleeping in your doorway, and, you know, there's perception issues that come with that. And, you know, you have visitors, you have a convention down here. It's a challenge, and, you know, people are making significant investments, and they want to, they want to find a solution. I think this business community is willing to step up and support that. I think housing, you know, I've said in a lot of these, I think housing is, it's not our immediate solution, but it's a long-term thing, and we have to attack it at multiple stratas. And I think that's a way that you can really get some of our development community, you can get our lenders, you know, whether it's getting creative with our lenders. And, because I think that's some of the biggest challenges, right? If it's not affordable, if people can't build housing at the cost that we need for these individuals, we've got to get creative, and we've got to incentivize our development community to do that. And so, you know, I, we, I know the city, I know the assistant city manager is looking at ways that the city can get creative and potentially utilize some existing tools that they already have. And I think, I think that's one of the biggest things that the business community can step up and support right now. So, but it's, it's a complex, very complex issue.
Jason and I had a conversation about this yesterday, and I realize, you know, you guys are usually business, but, you know, it's a chicken and egg thing, and we've got to have the housing. And Councilmember Hoheisel bringing up the duplex, you know, a lot of people think duplex is just rentals, and we don't want them in our neighborhood. That duplex is going to be your starter home, because whenever these houses are starting at $400,000, and you can buy a side of a duplex for half that, I think that's going to be your first-time starter home. And otherwise, you know, the $150,000 house is gone. They're just, they're just not around anymore.
Appreciate the insight and feedback. I want to walk us through now, I think, for the most part, and if there's other questions, we can continue to go back on some of these challenges and where we're at and the things that are influencing these outcomes. Hopefully, the community and those in this room understand the dynamic complexity to this conversation, how many things are influencing these outcomes. I'd like to walk us through real quickly. Now, none of these are going to be a direct solve of what we're here to talk about, and we're going to get to this part, the emergency shelter. But I think it's important that people understand what, as a community, what we are doing and the direction we are heading. And I want to kind of outline the four or five things that we're doing as a community, and hopefully, people understand that there's a theme being intertwined here, that this really is a community collaboration. The state, the county, the city, nonprofit, faith, business community. So the first, obviously, is we do have a state psychiatric hospital coming to Sedgwick County. The state approved that. The county's working on the startup of this and the build of this, and then we'll hand this back over to the state for the operation piece of it. But that's going to allow for some significant pressure relief in the community, not only from our Sedgwick County Jail, but also for those that are needing involuntary commitment because they're at harm of themselves or harm to others. So looking at 50 beds, possibly up to 100 beds, that's one step that we're moving in the right direction. The second is, obviously, the challenge of the workforce and pipeline. Wichita State, KU, with the biomedical school, up to 3,000 students in downtown Wichita. Aside from that being a generational economic opportunity, but there's a significant pipeline opportunity for workforce. Calm care crisis expansion, this conversation about substance use and the need for medical detox and more resources in this space, calm care crisis is going to expand from the county, and that will help to alleviate some of that pressure. And then the fourth thing, and hopefully, Councilmember Ballard, if you can help us in this, or anybody else from the city, is what has been deemed the MAC, the multi-agency campus, which is directly related to this issue of homelessness. I don't know if somebody would like to take the lead and have a conversation about what that looks like and the timeline on these things or, and where we're heading in that, but this is the opportunity to bring congregate shelter, correct? Congregate shelter to, and then wrap around services to help people that, to connect them to the ultimate goal of housing and healthy living. So someone would like to maybe give a briefing on what the MAC is and where we're heading with that? I think it might be helpful.
I've had a few conversations where people, I think, get confused on the things that you're discussing, on what they're going to take care of. And I just want to make it clear, when we talk about the psychiatric hospital, that is in no way going to alleviate the homelessness problem, because we're not going to have people, and I'm sure that we probably know this from anybody here that's listening online or with the news outlets here, I want to make that clear, because I don't want to put false hope out there that that is going to be part of this resolving this issue, because it's really not.
Well, I like to say I appreciate that. I think the, what you're referring to might work as far as shutting off the valves. In that way, more people are not added to the homeless population, but I do appreciate that. As far as the MAC goes, we're using a good chunk of the federal funds, ARPA funds, to set up a multi-use center that will, like you said, will be an emergency shelter, a congregate shelter. I do believe there's non-congregate options in there as well. And it's, you had a good description. It's also going to be a housing hub to where we can try to accomplish our ultimate goal of getting people back into housing as opposed to just moving from shelter to shelter, because that's just like playing whack-a-mole. No matter what, it's, you get them cleared out on South Broadway, or you, you know, you just come in and disrupt the camps, and then they'll go out to West Wichita. So to address it humanely, it's mostly focused on getting people rehoused and letting them know what services are out there, including the vouchers, which we recently passed, splitting the vouchers up. So in that way, we will actually have twice as many vouchers in the upcoming year. They'll only be two months as opposed to four months, but this is something, because we've already ran out of vouchers this year because of how many people have been applying. So this will help get people out of their, in an emergency situation. So that's just a little bit of what's going on with the MAC.
How many beds?
Yeah.
Still to be defined. It's kind of a moving process, a fluid process at this point.
Is that a range you're looking at?
I couldn't tell you for sure right now. We are using money that we're, we're selling our housing stock and putting a lot of those houses back on the market, and the money we get from that is going to go into this and other services later directed at affordable housing and addressing the homeless issue.
I could just add on to Councilmember Ho Heisel's comments there. It also includes the navigation center, which is the wraparound services, so that all services run in one location, similar to a Haven of Hope in San Antonio, if anyone's familiar with that. We currently had an RFP out on the street to look for a developer to help identify location and seek a facility, whether it's an existing one or a build new. We did a contract with Petra Development, McCown Gordon, and I can't remember the third partner.
HFG Architects.
Thank you. And so they're currently evaluating spaces right now and trying to identify that location. Again, not only using the existing ARPA money that we have, but also potential sale of single-family residential's in our housing inventory. We could have as much as $9 million, but maybe even higher than that, depending upon what we realize on the sale of these properties. It's possibly a $30 million project, so we're going to need partners, additional resources, an operator. We have operating dollars in the 25 budget for the center operation, but that's probably not going to cover it all. We're going to have to find partners to operate and help fund it.
Are you guys looking at downtown? Is that pretty much the location?
There is no restriction--
Okay.
--as to where it has to be.
Okay. I would like, I think we got to begin, step back further, and I think this is a good conversation. For opinion, I certainly have mine, but is this type of an institution, is this sort, this MAC, this campus, this wraparound service, is this something that's desperately needed in this community? Because the challenge of this is not just going to be the initial infrastructure, it's going to be sustained funding. Is how do we fund this thing? How do we sustain the funding? I think this is a conversation that those in this room are going to have to have with our constituents as well, is, you know, how important is this to this community? Is this a need? If not doing what City Wichita is working on right now, does that somehow invert the trend line of what we're seeing with those that are unhoused in our community? And I think that's really where the crutch meets the road, honestly, is, is this needed in this community? And if it is, then how do we find sustained funding for it?
What is, do you guys have a cost estimate of just operations?
In '25, it's $500,000 is what we budgeted. And again, I don't think that's full coverage.
Okay.
We weren't planning on funding any of it operationally. We were planning originally to all have, to have partners, but the landscape determined that we're going to need to help support that, that ongoing operational funding. So that's why in '25, the manager put $500,000 in. I believe that's just half of what was projected. Does that sound right?
I was going to say, I know that it takes about, just for looking at the winter shelter, you know, the numbers that I have that Humankind has run, it took, it's about like 1.2 million just for the winter season. So, I mean, you're looking at, that 500,000 is great, but that's not, it's only going to be maybe a quarter or not even scratch the surface of what's needed.
I would be interested in, and I'll put a little pressure on the county here a little bit, because, which will become obvious here.
Well, you know a guy.
But I think part of, I guess I'd be interested, just from a local perspective, are you guys already leaning into the idea or, you know, just kind of where are you at on, as I've visited and spoke with different stakeholders in the community, and as someone who has relatives that have been homeless and struggle with mental health, disability, things like that, I just have a little bit of deeper awareness of living as a family member, you know, it's ongoing. It will be a lifetime of care for my family member, for our family. And one of the things that I see is, as we talk about the MAC, we talk about these different things, I think it is extremely important that there's affordable housing in multiple communities, multiple districts of Sedgwick County. Communities are not necessarily going to be happy about that necessarily, and it's, and I'm concerned that builders aren't not going to want to do that organically. This, the housing issue, in addition to affecting the unhoused, it's affecting, I know, in fact, all the state legislators sitting here right now. We all know State Representative who's been looking for housing, be able to buy their first home for years within their first, their district, and they cannot afford to do so. I know right now with my elderly parents, I would like to relocate them again and closer to me. And when you sell a home, it costs you money. And so be, even though their home is paid off, it costs money to do that transaction and buy a new one, and being able to afford to do, again, affordable housing is an issue. So this affects many things, but specifically for the county, I think there's a need for calm care to be located in multiple places. And I know that adds to the expense, but part of what's important to having affordable housing in multiple districts, multiple areas of the county or city, is family members are picking up their loved ones and driving them to appointments or to the grocery store or the doctor's office or, or to their, you know, their counseling appointments or, you know, all the things that we all have to do to live. And so driving clear across town, you know, and a lot of times you're talking about elderly parents or siblings or whoever who have full-time jobs and children and all that stuff, who are trying to pitch in and help. So having one, I think centralized locations are awesome, and I think it's a great place to start, but we need satellite options also for the community at large. The truth is, as we know, mental health and substance abuse affects everyone.
Yeah.
And so having practical resources that are nearby is an important component. It also increases the independence of the people who need those resources, of being able to possibly walk there or whatever.
I appreciate that, and I think that that highlights something that I think is worth mentioning, that I think that the homeless conversation is where we start to see the different capacities of government really intermingle. It's, used to be said that, you know, the City of Wichita does housing, you know, state statute has their thing, the county does mental health. The homeless conversation is really where we start to see this overlap, to where it's going to require a response, in my opinion, from city, state, and the county in many of these regards, to bring the resources needed to change the trend.
And I would just add to that, that if you just look across the country, the counties, with the National Association of Counties is one thing that I go to every year, and this is a topic that's really been coming up a lot more lately, because homelessness and affordable housing is now such a public health crisis that that is right in the mission of what we do. And so there has been a shift in thinking that this really does now portage a lot more in the county than it did in the past necessarily. And so I think the conversation of, well, this is now a city issue or a county issue or state issue is, is changing, and I think there's a shift here with commissioners and with our staff as well, that we want to be more a part of this conversation. And I think this is a really great way that we can start some of these conversations and say, how can we be more at the table? How can we help the city more? Because we don't want to say that the city has to have, to do all of this and that we aren't going to be a part of that, because I don't think that's, any of us are there anymore. So I agree with what I'm saying.
I'd like to just throw out there that the unhoused population is a very diverse population. Some of them have dependents, some of them have substance abuse problems, some of them have mental health problems, some of them are actually content to stay where they're at. They don't want to change. Some of them desperately want to have help. And so it's almost like you have to filter this population in such a way that, I think the MAC is absolutely very, really important for people who want to transition out of that situation to something that's stable in the community. This, this is the way to get them out of that population forever, and they can get the help that they need. So the MAC, I think, is part of the answer. I actually think the barrier shelters and the non-barrier shelters have a purpose to play here. The barrier shelters actually, in many ways, because they have higher standards, if you will, they're very, very important. We don't want to, in any way disrespect them. I think that if you, if someone could get into a barrier shelter, those standards are really important for those folks, because they need, they need that type of structure. The non-barrier shelters is almost like giving a man a fish for a day type of thing. It's just, it's relieving immediate crisis. It doesn't solve a problem tomorrow necessarily. So to get someone out of that situation and have a vision for getting them transitioned out of this status, then, first of all, they have to want to do it. Second of all, getting them to, getting them into some type of treatment program that they are willing to do is a key part of that. And again, barrier shelters, if we can get them into there, is part of the answer. So I guess, I guess my point is this. I don't think there's one, there's not one, there's not one answer to this problem. It's a multifaceted solution. The barrier shelters are very, very important, and the non-barrier shelters are also very important. I guess we need to have some of each. And also, let me just also, let me also say, the private sector has done a great job over the years. The problem is they're hitting their capacity. I think right now, we're talking about the public's component here. What's the public responsibility here? I don't want to take over. I don't think that's the right answer here. I think what we have to do is, is, again, have that conversation with the private sector as well. Maybe public-private partnerships are needed, but again, for example, if I could expand what, if I could somehow encourage a barrier shelter to expand and take on the greater, you know, the greater need, if you will, I think that's a, that's a, that's a solution that has to be on the table. I don't want to just simply create a government solution and say, that's, no, this is how we're going to solve this problem. I think that that's, that may be easy, but as we do that, bear in mind, this is coming from property tax dollars, which actually creates more affordability problems for the people that we serve in this community. Talking about affordable housing, if we raise taxes, we're creating other problems. And so we have to be very careful not to simply depend on more tax dollars to solve this problem. It actually creates more pressure on affordable housing issues as well. Thank you.
I want to, real quick, if I may, circle back around to the MAC funding. Has there been any conversations with state, federal dollars we can leverage on that?
Well, there already is some federal, it's ARPA dollars.
For the MAC?
Right.
Well, for the operational costs?
No, for the opera--
For the operational costs right now is just strictly city budget.
Okay.
And again, it's not enough to cover what we plan it to be.
Okay, we'll have a conversation.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you very much for allowing us to be here. My name's Abel Frederick. I'm the Vice President of Community Impact at United Way of the Plains. I get to work alongside Matt with the COC, and I also oversee our, our direct services back into the community and all the investments that we make back into the nonprofit community. I want to piggyback off the commissioner's comments here. Thank you very much for making those comments. The thing I want to highlight for you, Commissioner, very, very much so, we will need the barrier shelters as well as the non-barrier shelters. The issue for those shelters is capacity. And in order for them to have capacity, we must continue to invest in those organizations. We are asking them to do very hard things in order to address a population that is in great need. If you take a look at that list up, up there, United Way of the Plains provides an investment to three of those six entities that is up there. And the investment that we make is not enough. We wish we could do more, and those are private donor dollars. As you said, Commissioner, the private sector is at its capacity. The business community has been very philanthropic to our organizations, but they need help in order to expand. You know, I don't know what the solution is. I'm very glad that the conversation is happening today with both city, county, and state government. Thank you all for being so concerned and so compassionate about this issue. But I will point out, the issue for many of these organizations is capacity. They are doing very hard work. They are not told thank you. They are asked to come up with a solution, and oftentimes, as you pointed out, Commissioner, you're dealing with various populations within your homeless shelter that may not want a solution, may have a barrier mentally, may have a barrier via substance abuse. So I just want us all to keep that in mind as we have this discussion today, that we're talking about people. Thank you.
May I? Please. One of the reasons I asked Commissioner to put this meeting together was because I'd asked for a strategic plan from many of the homeless shelters four or five years ago. I don't see one still. This, the homeless situation in Sedgwick County has a reputation on the streets of being disorganized and going in different directions. And it was my hope in this meeting, first of all, that we can tell everybody that we're going to put a plan together, a plan that will use the not-for-profits as the backbone, but use city, county, and state resources to support them, which they haven't been supported adequately in the past. I got to make a couple other comments, and some of my colleagues from the house will understand it. Creating another bureaucracy in the center that the city's doing is the wrong direction. Those kind of evaluations can be done with the not-for-profits or with calm care right now. And what you're going down is a, is a direction of creating another bureaucracy to repartially with the resources of a bureaucracy that hasn't been run very well, and that's the housing. Money is not the issue in this. We have $3 billion at the state that can be tapped into with my colleagues here and called to the governor. The problem is, we need, first of all, I think, an emergency shelter to deal with this winter, which is going to come in a week or two weeks or three weeks. And that's what we have to figure out, and figure out if we can come up with an emergency grant from the city, the county, and the state to do that. Then, if you look at model programs around the country, they have a permanent housing system for those people that go from on the streets to the therapy they need or the training they need or the job care they need, and you work with them for six months or a year, and then you move them out. Those are great models, and the state has a role in that. We could put a few million dollars in in order to create that kind of housing. Final thing, and then I'll shut up, and my colleagues understand how I can get going. ARPA funds are running out. You build another bureaucracy, it's going to come on the tax dollars, as was said. You don't want to do that. I think one question we have to ask-- I think one question we have to ask, and I think I heard it answered, was that we're not supporting the not-for-profits in order to deal with this winter's crisis. And I would like to have them at the table immediately and say, what does it do, what do we have to do to keep it open this winter, until we find a solution for the long term?
I would like to make a couple of comments, real quick, about some of the things that you just said. I think if you go around the country, there are places that have figured this, you know, what works for them, it's working well for their communities. I think we are further along than most people would give us credit for to figuring out what works for Wichita. And so I think for people watching at home, I don't want comments made to say that we have not been addressing this issue, because as Commissioner Beatty said, we've done a number of things to start addressing this, and now we're figuring out, how do we put those pieces together, and how do we work together to get to the end goal? I do think that that's one of the reasons why we're here today, is to see how can the state help us and get involved. I love that you said that you have that money that's available, because if that's the case, then we will be at your door asking for it, because it's needed. So I hope that when we do come and ask for it, that we have some really great supporters at the state that are going to be willing to help us in the way that we do. And while money might not be the only thing that's in our way right now, it is going to be part of it, because as we just talked about, how do we sustain a MAC? Well, that's going to be funding. So if there is money available that you're willing to give us to help fund this MAC program in the building and all of the future that it's going to have, we'll take it, because it's going to be needed here. So I just don't want people watching to think that we have not been taking this seriously, because I feel like we have. And since I've started, we put so much time, energy, and money into not only what the county's doing, but trying to be collaborative with our nonprofit partners and our private businesses, and with, you know, other municipalities and state governments. And I think it's really important that we highlight that, because to say that we have not been doing that is not only wrong, but I think it just, it makes the situation even worse. And so just want to make sure that we're very clear, that things have been happening, and there is a significant movement. And when we go places like on city-to-city trips, and we hear what other people are doing, they're actually surprised with how far we've come, and how great of collaborations we have between all of the sectors. And so I just want to make sure that that is, that was it.
I'm going to interject.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have listened to the MAC plan, and I really believe that it is a foundation of an idea of coordination of United Way and a multitude of other agencies. The government, I believe the government should not be the prime, money, they should be the prime facilitator of coordinating efforts between agencies that are already doing what they do. And they're just looking for support. If we look at a MAC plan as being a solution, what is the solution for? If the people's mindset is, it's a solution to get people out of my sight, so I can get to somewhere else, so I can go ahead and live my life, then we've got a problem. If we, as leaders, whatever level of leading you're doing, if we continue to work and lead through a MAC plan, or past a MAC plan, to a better plan, and continue, when there's facilities and programs in place and coordinated between agencies, on down the line, and this discussion continues to happen, as happened this morning. If it continues to happen, and it's a follow-up, not a launching or a one-camera show, but if we're in it because we care about the people, about the mental health, about the physical disabilities, about the physical abuse, there's so many things that are factors that we're not even talking about this morning, that are, that need to be met in our community. But it's, the United Way is a front agency that says, hey, we're here, we're ready to take the call and plug it in here, and plug it in here. But unless the community understands that it's facilitating our people, not just some people that are homeless, or just showed up on our door, some of them are coming from wealthy homes, some of them are coming from broken homes, some of them are coming home from mental health issues that simply no one knows how to deal with yet, because their families never dealt with that before. And so it spreads across the whole realm, and I'm here to have the conversation, because I think we, as a community from state down, need to be talking about it, because they're our people. That's why.
If I could follow up on Commissioner Lopez and Representative Elverson. Yeah, we do have state dollars, and we are willing to help on the state level. I think the biggest thing we want to see is a concrete plan of how we're going to make this work, and sustainable. You know, we do have $3 billion, but there may be, we may be in the middle of a recession right now. There may be a recession coming, those dollars dwindle, and as those dollars dwindle, so does the dollars that the private sector can put in. So I think we need to be there, yeah. To me, a public-private partnership always works. I always prefer those, because I do think private industry needs to step up as well. And then we're there to supplement the dollars when they can't. But I think the biggest thing is, and it's what can come of this meeting, is a concrete plan and a path forward. And I think that is the biggest thing. Yeah, we can kick dollars in, but if we're just kicking dollars in without a plan going forward, then it may not, you know, be as effective. So I think that's part of it there. And then, yeah, hitting on the homeless shelter, emergency shelter this winter, I think that's a big deal. And I would love to try to figure out a plan on if we need to kick in some state dollars, if we need to kick in county dollars, city dollars, how are we going to make this work?
I appreciate the fact that we have the state at the table today. We've been meeting for some time. We've been looking at this issue for a long time. We've been down to San Antonio, to Bear County, to see what they've done in that area. We've been to Colorado Springs, to see what Colorado Springs has done. We bring those ideas back. We've had a couple en bancs with the city of Wichita, where we've discussed this. A plan was put together, and it was presented at the en banc. And so we've been working it, but truly, it has to be not just the government that's involved. We have to have businesses especially involved in this. The nonprofits, of course, are a vital part of this. But up to this point, we haven't really had the state at the table. And that's what I sincerely appreciate today, is we've got the state here at the table that can see what our issues are. I hear a lot of times at the state that counties are spending more money than we need. Well, truly, I do not believe that, working local government. I don't want to see things happen at the state level that's going to impact our ability to address issues like this that we're facing today. So thank you very much for being here today and hearing what we're doing. I want to make sure that you know that this isn't something that just popped up today. This is something we've been working for, ever since I've been on the commission. So thank you. I sincerely appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner, for saying that, and I thank the state legislators for being here as well. I did just want to speak to, you know, that idea of having a plan. The Continuum of Care receives, you know, $2.8 million in federal funds to initiate. HUD has already identified what the plan is, and it's permanent housing, which ties in with affordable housing. We housed, or kept housed, over 1,100 homeless people last year, and are averaging housing about 50 a month. And with all that, we're still, you know, facing the problems that we have. The idea of having a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week shelter is key. We've ran a winter shelter, you know, for every year, and what happens is, when it comes spring, they dissipate like the wind, and so then we have to go find them. And all the work that we've put in to try to get people housed falls by the wayside. We have to, if we can't find them in encampments, then we have to wait till the next winter to pick up where we left off. And so I just wanted to add that in, that we do have a plan.
I appreciate that, and I think that's a needed transition for where I want to take this conversation for the next 20 minutes. The plans with the MAC, the plans with these conversations about wraparound services, getting people, not just, shelter is a Band-Aid, it is a temporary fix, it's an urgent crisis fix. The model is to get people to housing. That is the goal. Permanent housing, permanent supportive housing, that is the goal. But many of the things that we're talking about that will help reinforce those things, like the MAC, are two and three years away. So we need to develop an interim plan for what happens now. I think by and large, most people that live in this community would agree that what's happening now isn't acceptable anymore. It's not acceptable anymore. It's not acceptable to the people that do want help, but don't know where to turn to find help, those that are unhoused. It's not acceptable to the business community that is pouring and investing into our community. It's not acceptable to our nonprofit partners that have been laboring in this space for a number of years, and are out of resources, and frankly, in some regards, out of time. So we've got to develop an interim plan. What I'd like to expand in this conversation moving forward, because we're not going to solve this problem today, is I would love for the county and the state to come alongside the city and have this conversation with the nonprofit community of what this MAC looks like, and let's sit with the table with them, and let's walk these things through. I believe that we've got to wrap services around people to get them into housing, and the mental health, and substance use treatment, vocational training. That's going to happen at this collaborative site. But we've got to develop an interim plan for a 24/7 low-barrier shelter in this community. It has to happen. What gets us from this point to the next three years, we've got to have that conversation. But the crisis situation now, and I believe it to be a crisis, is what's been referenced a couple times with the emergency winter shelter. A quick background, and I'd like to publicly thank Humankind for, I think, the last 17 years, they have operated the emergency winter shelter in Wichita. And they've done a fantastic job. And they've done it, for the most part, with a little bit of public support. For the most part, it's been privately fundraised under, and they've handled nearly 100% of this on the workload and the resources and the finances. So they need to be publicly thanked for that. We've entered into a situation now to where, due to the infrastructure and the number of people that are entering into this space, that they simply cannot perform the winter shelter on the level that they were able to historically. I'm going to lend to you here in just a second, Matt, maybe if you can walk us through. This is what existed as of the beginning of this year with emergency resources. And then, Matt, if you wouldn't mind telling us what has changed on that, so we have a kind of an idea of what we're walking into.
Well, you know, first of all, the TSA Emergency Lodge, I mean, that's only 11 beds, but it's now shut down. Key on that was that they serve women and families, and so that removes one shelter option.
Why is it shut down?
Because of funding.
Where's it located?
It's located downtown Wichita at 350 North Market Street. The Humankind Emergency Winter Shelter, you know, it says that they have 120 beds, and that's, I mean, there are cots on the floor, like, next to each other, like, lined up. And, you know, at our coldest times last year, they will never turn anyone away, but it's like packing them in like sardines. I mean, they'd have 150 people in there, and there's like, not even hardly room to walk. And that building is not, it does not have, it's not up to fire code. If there were to have been some kind of emergency, it would have been a disaster. And so, you know, they've got to a place where they can't do that. They're not saying they don't want to run shelter, they're just saying they can't do it in that building anymore.
So if I can interject on the building, what, do we have a cost estimate to get the building up to code?
They've quoted over $500,000.
Just to get it up to code?
And then they're still packed in there.
And then they're still packed in there like sardines.
All it is, is the code, with a bunch of people warehoused.
And I believe they have plans for a new building here in two years or so, that they're...
They have a capital, yeah.
Yeah. And that's fine, but that's two years down the road, and I'm just, if we're just looking at this year, and we can't come up with a plan in a pinch, could we get that building up to code somehow, to where we have something?
So these conversations have been going on for about a month now in the community. The city's loved the effort. Humankind can't be here today because of previous commitments, but they have been at the table, there's been significant conversations. We explored that opportunity, and the answer is no. They can't, there's not enough time to get what they need done. And again, this, it's an old church. This church, in their master plan, they have a master plan that they're working towards and fundraising towards. This church doesn't exist in that master plan. I don't believe that it's part of that master plan. So investing that kind of dollars into a period of, into a property that won't exist long-term was part of the calculus, but we're out of time, frankly, is the bigger...
When was, when did they decide on their end to not have this?
Yeah, the conversation, we were, I was alerted in August, in the middle of August of this conversation, but I think they were alerted about the same time that this wasn't going to work. This wasn't something that had been brewing for a year, and then they just sprung it on everybody. This is something that, yeah, it was, the end of August is when they were alerted that they were, due to some code standards, fire marshal, that they were not going to be allowed to house the same number that they're used to house. Now, the city of Wichita went into work and tried to find some locations. I think there's been five locations total that have been dealt with, where the city even discussed, maybe do we buy a building and do this interim plan for the next three years, and do a 24/7 low-barrier shelter? And to my knowledge, all five of those properties were not, were not able to be accomplished.
Now, when you said, certainly, you said that they're not able to house the number they have been. Are they able to do anything in that building?
Yes. So the answer at this point in time, as of last week, was that they can do something. That number is still a discussion, but they do have the capacity to do something. The challenge is this. We are estimating that we're short about 200 to 300 emergency winter shelter beds in this community right now. They can do something, but it will not be a low-barrier, they will have to turn some people away. And that's the challenge, because of the growing numbers in this community, is we simply do not have enough beds as it stands now. Even with Humankind doing something, whatever they can, there are not enough beds that are existing for the need right now.
Well, even if they can do something with that building to alleviate a little bit of the pressure on finding...
And they're committed to doing that.
Okay.
They are absolutely committed to do that. Yes, sir.
Well, it sounds like so they'll do something. So we have to get them some additional money, they will do some amount. They did 120, so you thinking maybe 25 or 50? Has that conversation been had?
Go ahead. I think the conversation was upwards around 75, 80 number, I believe, is what they can accomplish. And this was the number, so the transition and conversation came, can we supplement that somehow? Not just in resources, but is there another space that we could locate, and we can decorate as a 24/7 low-barrier opportunity?
And?
Well, that conversation's happening and ongoing right now.
Okay, so they could take 80 of the 120, and if you want to get to 200, you still need another 120.
Correct.
Would any of those temporary sites that the city was looking at do 120?
I don't think any of those are viable options at this point in time, for a variety of reasons.
I would just like, excuse me, I just also want to publicly thank Union Rescue Mission. They were going, only going to be taking 30 instead of their potentially 90 men a day that they take, but because they were going to start construction, and they're actually holding off until after the first, or after, probably to the spring, so that they can continue to take full capacity of the 90 people to help us out. So I just wanted to thank them.
And that was Union Mission?
Union Rescue Mission.
Last week, I had a lot of inquiries about, we're using the downtown library for warehousing only for Operation Holiday. Was there ever a discussion about utilizing the library for more?
No conversation that I've been a part of was the library brought up.
We've explored it, we've looked at it. There's a couple of difficulties with that one as well, and that's something I think the city manager could update us on later. And I just also want to say, in regards to the properties, there's at least one of the properties that it looks like we won't be able to get in there in time to accomplish an emergency shelter, but it looks like we might be able to get in there next spring. So starting next year, that will have another option, a pretty good option from, if it goes through, as far as having an emergency shelter, or a 24-hour shelter starting next spring and summer.
So would the need be, let me clarify, is the need infrastructure, is that the need? Is it a facility? Is that the biggest need?
Well, some of the facilities that we've looked at that would actually work, the people are only interested in selling the property, not leasing it out, and it would be a big purchase, multimillion-dollar purchase for the property. So that's one of the barriers that we're finding, is just people unwilling to actually lease the building to us, short term.
There was another conversation that took place about, obviously, at Sedgwick County Government, we have an emergency services department, some sort of a crisis mitigation with a tent strategy, like what we see with FEMA in disaster areas, things of that sort. Now, there are other communities across the country that have done something like this. There are climate control, there's resources there, it's a mini MAC to where we can bring wraparound services there. Is that a part of the conversation we should be having at this point in time? Are we too late to the game with that conversation? Is that something that really should be entertained on a bigger level?
We've looked at that as well. I think that is further down in the planning stages, as far as Plan A, Plan B. So it is something that we've looked at, and I do believe there's an emergency plan there. But we want to exhaust all the options as far as having a building, or someplace that they can go that's legitimately indoors before we get to that.
Okay.
So on the Humankind Shelter, again, they go up to 75, is that without any further improvements to get up to code? Like, they're ready right now to do 75, or is there going to have to be some?
I think there are some minor things that they are doing internally, that they are actually not asking for financial support for, that they are doing. But, yes, so they're going to get that ready to go, and I believe they said they would try to get that going by the end of, by the middle of November, is what I was told, to be ready to go, so.
You have down, I think, 11 beds at TSA Emergency Lodge, and that was, I heard earlier, was because of dollars. They closed. So how much does it need to keep it open?
They won't, I'm sorry, I did ask them that question. They said they're too far into this thing, they've already laid off their staff, they've already done it, they, there's no going back now.
Okay.
But they have a, they have a facility.
They're converting it into like transitional beds and like, kind of like a recovery-type situation.
I got you. Okay.
I think it's also worth noting that even at this, with what we see on this diagram, I still feel that this might not be enough beds for the emergency winter situation, even in normal. And we've lost, obviously, Union Rescue Mission's willing to delay their construction and house some. Humankind's willing to do what they can, but it's still, with the inputs that we have in this community now, than the needs, it still was not enough. We simply do not have enough beds.
Salvation Army closed.
Salvation Army closed.
How many beds do they have?
I have a question. Are there any empty schools around here that maybe could be used for the, for the winter time?
We actually talked to one of the school board members yesterday or two days ago. They're looking at it. I believe that they want to sell us the building, you guys have to okay it.
The state has to.
Yeah, the state has to okay it. So we're exploring some of the buildings, a lot of them have already been sold for private apartments and whatnot, so we are in communication with them.
On the state level, I believe we just have rider first refusal on the state level for selling schools. And I believe the state finance council or the LCC are able to make that determination without the legislator being in session. Don't quote me on that, but I think that's, that's how this is, just a rider first refusal, and we do have a mechanism without us reconvening to make that determination. Just one question for somebody that may know, if it was a gymnasium, just a regular gymnasium or something, how quick and how much money does it take to get that operation up and running in time for winter?
Now, while I couldn't give a specific quote, I mean, you know, you would be thinking about getting bunk beds, you know, to, for the space. You'd have to figure out the meals, which a lot of those can be donated and that kind of thing. And then, you know, of course, the staffing, which some of that's already figured into the budget. Because I do want to say that, you know, while we can say, hey, Humankind says they can do 75, great, we're good, I want to encourage you to imagine the pressure that they're going to be on, under, on January the 15th, when it's sub-zero temperatures and they're at 75 and they have a lot outside the door, you know, like, of people trying to get in and medical emergency personnel trying to bring people to their shelter and all of that pressure, they're going, they're probably not going to turn people away, and so they're still going to be in the same situation that they're in.
No, I think it's, on the Humankind, it's like, okay, they could take 75, that's good that they can even take 75 now, because then that does alleviate a little bit of pressure of finding, maybe we don't need, you know, a space to go up to 200 now, just one single space for in a pinch. But yeah, I'd be interested to know, like, the costs associated with getting a shelter, even if it's a gymnasium somewhere we can find up and running in time.
Yeah, the most recent estimates is typically about $25 per day per client. They try to staff five staff per 60 clients. So when we were looking at a 200-bed emergency winter shelter for five months, the total was right around 1.1 million. That included salary wages for building liability insurance, utilities, food, building repairs, security, those are all factors that were...
And that was, that was for 200?
That was for 200.
And that's not counting a lease or anything like that?
Correct. That's just operation costs.
Just operation costs.
Not the facility piece.
I got you.
Is there, is there some sort of emergency, there was a mention of an emergency grant or emergency funding for what I deem to be a crisis. Is there something available that we can have a deeper conversation of what that looks like? Is there something on the state level, or, I know the city's got money set aside already, is there?
I mean, there's, there's always state dollars that can be dug up somewhere, especially... I forget my conservative friend, Henry Helgerson, over here, but there's always state dollars we can wrestle up somewhere. But, you know, when we, when we apply for those grants or when we go for those dollars, they want to see a concrete plan. So that's something that we can definitely explore. My friend, Representative Helgerson, is the ranking Democrat on House Appropriations, so I'm sure he can find dollars better than most.
State doesn't like to get into the, starting an additional program. We fund money through different agencies such as Comcare. I actually think the better alternative is for the state to put in some money for housing in the transitional long-term housing, transitional long-term, meaning not the homeless shelter, but putting into a specific housing, so six months, a year, so people, you, you get them to a point where you move them to a more permanent location, but they need some more transition. That's what I've seen in other models in other states. And I think that that's more, but as, as my colleague just said, there are lots of pots, there could be some urgency, but understand, your problem here is the same problem that Kansas City, Lawrence, et cetera, are going to have, and that's why we don't put money into emergency local programs, because then we have to do it for everybody in the state. But I think that there is, within our guidelines, some money available on a long-term. But if there was something emergency, we could always make some, advocate to a few of the governor's office and some of the state agencies that have pots of money.
Okay, that's helpful, appreciate that. Excuse me, we're winding down here, and to respect everybody's time, this is, the conversation's going to have to be ongoing. And again, I appreciate the commitment from the state, city, county, highway, hot team, everyone, business community, everyone that's willing to have this conversation. I would continue to add that this, this situation on the emergency winter shelter, although there is going to be some resources available, they are not enough. They are simply not enough, and these conversations are going to have to be ongoing, and they're going to have to be urgent conversations. So with your permission, I'd like to continue having these conversations outside of this room, but to keep the state partners involved in these, so that we can try to find some sort of crisis mitigation and quick.
I would suggest, I would like, we can do it in two weeks, we can do it as a Zoom meeting, you know, this winter shelter emergency, I mean, it weighs heavy on my mind. In fact, constituents contacted me about it. You know, I, I can't live with the fact that we're going to have people in the greatest city, in the greatest state, in the greatest country in the history of the world, sleeping on the cold street at night. So I want to get this, I want a solution to this, and I want to be a part of that solution and help. So if there's a way that we can all jump on a phone call in a couple of weeks, get an update on where we are on the emergency shelter situation, I'd appreciate it. We could do another meeting, do a Zoom call or something. I just, I want to be kept in a loop and know how we can support this from the state point of view.
Okay, well, let's do this. Why don't we, why don't we look at next Friday, the 20th, as to follow, and we'll figure out if that's going to be a virtual or maybe coming back together in the meantime.
If possible, if we could get maybe someone from Humankind here, a few of these folks here that we can just...
Well, a couple of things we're going to do in the interim. I'll work with our city partners in the conversation, affirming up, the MAC is the long-term conversation, but I think the focus right now needs to be on this crisis winter shelter.
That work is getting done.
And that work is getting done, without a shadow of a doubt, yeah, on the MAC.
It's not happening as fast as everybody wants it to happen.
We need an interim plan.
The interim plan is the conversation that I want to continue in those, in those pursuits. But the winter, emergency winter shelter, what we'll do in the meantime is we'll firm up some of these members to make sure we have exact data, and we'll update some of the, some of the state resources in Sedgwick County, or state of resources in Sedgwick County on the emergency shelter. We'll firm those numbers up for you, and then we'll communicate as to whether we'll do this via virtual or we're going to come back together, and we'll make sure we have exact data. And we'll give you an update on what the conversations, there are conversations happening today, there are conversations happening Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of next week on this situation, and we'll make sure you're in the loop.
If I could request that next Friday be Zoom and be early, that would be great. Our calendar's already full that day. But that would be, Zoom call, I think, would work perfectly great. And I just want to thank everybody for being here, for asking us to come. It's been on my mind, just with the news headlines and not really knowing what was going on and being able to have this discussion. I witnessed an elderly lady driving into one of the homeless camps two days ago with a car full of stuff, so I know there's a lot of people out there that want to help. And maybe is there something that maybe the officer could tell us, there's individuals, like, is there something we could do, or, you know, just normal citizens, is there something that we can do that everybody could, yeah, church groups?
Well, I can tell you just from experience of dealing with Humankind around the winter shelter, they actually rely every year to try to get out and get the community to help pick one night to come out and serve meals, and they have a list of volunteers for each night, and they're always trying to fill those slots. So whatever we try to do, we need to tap into that community to start helping out with those meals, and they do step up in this community and do that.
Oaklawn, Plainview, Beachwood, Hilltop happened suddenly in an emergency need in going into the time of Pearl Harbor and going into the war. This town grew by about 80,000 people, and people were in attics, people were in basements, people were, people were resourceful to be able to make their cells available. So it's a matter of us, us being available to help with a plan. Plainview, Oaklawn are still here because they were, they were done quickly, they were done with a coordinated effort with government and public, public involvement. So I think we can meet any kind of emergency, just if we put our heads to it.
To address your question earlier on help, last year, Humankind had a big deficit in being able to feed their residents. So as Officer Nate said, not just serving meals, but if people are truly concerned about helping Humankind with this emergency shelter, any donations of food to them would be greatly helpful. And also, as my colleague, Matt Lowe, said, these individuals can be packed like sardines. It is cold in that building. Any donations of blankets, warm clothing to Humankind for the benefit of the residents in the shelter during the winter, I think, would be greatly appreciated by them.
Can I ask a question on that? Again, if people have things that they're not using and they want to donate those items, that does make a lot of sense, but I think that, for example, the Food Bank warehouse, they can actually purchase food, probably cheaper than we can go to the grocery store and buy it and donate the food. So if you're going to be buying things to donate, it might be better just to give them money, let them actually make those purchases. Am I accurate in saying that?
Yeah.
Okay, so money always works, and it, for anybody who's listening, don't necessarily go out and buy things and donate, it may not fit people, may not be, you know, they have a whole lot of different things to try to prepare, it's complicated. Cash works better, so don't buy stuff to donate, just give them the money, okay? Go ahead. I see Henry is, Representative, go ahead.
And in keeping with that, I think private citizens should give money, but I also think that the city and the county and the state should try to pony up right now and make a commitment. You don't have to do it now, but you go back to the managers and you say, look, maybe we can come up with 10,000, or 20,000, or 30,000. They're stepping up to take care of 75, 80 people, Wichitaons, that need help. We need to open up our checkbooks in order to help them out.
Thank you.
So you have some comments you can make?
I was just going to close this up, but you go ahead.
I was just going to say, first of all, I want to say, I want to thank our staff, our manager, Tom Stoltz, and we have communications folks behind me, Tanya Cole, Nicole Gibbs and others. I just want to say thank you for them to scramble, to put this together. I know there were some concerns about us being disorganized getting together. I know this seemed like it was rushed, but it was timely, timeliness, it just had to happen today. And with that in mind, I think I've already heard enough people say that next Friday would be a good time for us to put on the calendar, for us to try to get together, maybe invite some other voices. If you can't be here in person, we can do Zoom as well, so I think I'd like to provide both options. And face, face-to-face is usually better, but if you, if you can't be here in person, then I think Zoom is a great option. So I'd like to maybe just tentatively say, would eight o'clock next Friday be a good target? Would that be early enough for you, Representative? You said early.
That's right.
Is that okay?
I'll be on the road, so...
Okay. I don't think we can do much before eight, because our offices generally start eight o'clock, so we don't want to do too much, because it's hard on our staff. So with that, I know there's a lot of ideas being floated out there. I know the city's trying really hard to find a space. And to Commissioner, Representative Helgerson's point, I see there's four city council members here, that's a majority of their, of their city council, I think, that have a heart. I'm sure that there's others that would also agree with this. I think the city's committed to doing what's needed for this temporary winter shelter, and I think the county, we have enough commissioners here, I think that you see that we're also concerned about that. And I love, I love the fact that the state is actually, I love your voice this morning, Representative Helgerson, I think your passion is wonderful. And I think that to know, to know that you're willing to go and get help from the state when we have a solution that we can, we know what we're talking about. Again, we're trying to find that, what that is, I think we're doing that as quickly as we can. Once we understand some numbers, I think to know that the state is there to help us is a, is a key part of our solution here. So I appreciate what you have said this morning, Representative. I think that was very, very important to hear from the state this morning. So thank you for not just initiating the meeting with our conversation last week, but actually being here, and then your comments this morning about having the state, you know, actually being able to help us out, that's wonderful. So I guess with that, I want to thank everyone for being here. Yes?
I just have one, one quick thing to say. One thing I think I would appreciate if everybody would think about is, what are we going to do in regard to the children and the families? That's one of the big ones, especially with the news of the, the five-year-old up in Topeka. I can't sleep at night without seeing her face. So whether it's, we come up with the emergency shelter, and some of the smaller shelters on the back end open up for specifically women and children to be sheltered. I talked to somebody from St. Anthony's the other day, and they're the family shelter, and they say they're turning people away daily. And as people are, you know, we have some of the eviction crises like we're talking about, after some of the properties that were in the news closed down, for about the next month, that's what I was concentrating on, was specifically trying to find housing for single moms with children, disabled people, elderly people are most vulnerable. So any ideas that we can have, or any workarounds to increase shelter space for women and children, that is definitely something that we need to address as well.
So just to take away on that, maybe what we're looking for is possibly not just one location, but maybe possible, or not just one facility that you can divide potentially, but maybe it needs to be two different facilities is another way to look at this as well.
One of the issues we find, and Officer Nate can speak to this, in the homeless camps, that some of them it is necessary to clear up. You know, you go out there and it's in the middle of a neighborhood, but what you find out is, if there's women there and there's no room in non-congregate shelters for women, by federal law, we cannot clear that camp. So that's just one of the aspects that we have to look at as well. But even more importantly is finding that woman, finding those children, adequate space, and if possible, not just a gym. I can imagine people, you know, a little five-year-old spending Christmas in a gym with 100 other people. So whatever we can do as far as, you know, maybe it's, maybe it is renting one of the hotels for a week for a family to get them out of the shelter, or out of the conditions, you know, all hands on deck in regards to trying to get the children stabilized and out of the conditions, out of the dangerous conditions, so.
Well, I also wanted to say, there's a lot smarter people in the room than me on this topic, and I appreciate having the wisdom in this room that worked so hard to bring ideas forward and have a conversation. I think some of us, like myself, have been watching and trying to learn, but I'm not, I'm not on the boards necessarily to understand the depth of some of the discussions that have happened. So I feel like I understand better right now, and I actually have a whole lot of questions, I'm going to have to hit him up later. I have a whole lot of questions and ideas now that, or I haven't had time to really articulate yet this morning, but I think we'll all work on this this week. I look forward to hopefully some type of a more concrete solution coming forward within a week or so. So with that, unless you have any final comments anybody needs to make, I'd like to go ahead and adjourn the meeting, but we'd like to set up, if you will, tentatively next Friday for eight o'clock, and if you can make, we would love to have you back, and if you can't, please consider attending by Zoom. Does that work for everybody, okay?